Good evening and welcome to the May twenty four, twenty twenty one Menlo Park Planning Commission Meeting. I am Henry Rick, I'm your Chair, and tonight we have President Commissioners Barnes, Ducardi, Doran, Kale, Kennedy, and Tate. Also staff present include, among others, Corinna Sander Meyer, Leo Tapia, and is Mr. Product going to join us as well? All right, I don't see an indication for Mr. Product. So at this point, we'll go ahead with reports and announcements. And Ms. Sendamire, do we have anything to contribute this evening?
Yes, good evening, Chair Rigs and Commissioners. And so tomorrow, the City Council will meet at 5:00 PM. And one item on the agenda is appointments to fill vacancies on city advisory bodies. And the City Council will also receive an update on the housing element update project, and they will provide feedback to staff. And also, there's a tentative plan to restart in-person City Council and Advisory Body hearings this September. That concludes my reports and announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff this evening from our Commissioners? Yes, Ms. Kennedy?
Yes, I sent, actually sent an email to to Sander Meyer earlier today. Can can you give us a breakdown of the neighborhoods that the sitting planning commissioners live in? Like if they're in Allied Arts, the Willows, Bellhaven, just, I'm just really, I'm just really curious. Some information, I'm just, I just don't have it off the top of my head. I couldn't find it anywhere, so.
Yeah, I, I believe that would be okay to provide to the other Commissioners. I will look through that and I can send an email to you and other Commissioners.
Excellent. And then sort of point two on that, I'm really hoping that that we're going to achieve some community balance on the Planning Commission with with, you know, particular, particular thought to the other communities that experience significant development and may, it might not be as well represented as, you know, some of the particular neighborhoods that are represented here. That's all. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. It would, it would certainly be wonderful if we had multiple applicants from multiple sections of the city. Ironic that this evening, we note that potentially we may not have even two applicants available for this planning commission. So it's very hard to find a chocolate-covered almond when you don't look at the, when you decide you will only look at one of the pots in the candy store.
But see, see, sometimes you don't need almonds, you need the, you need the not almonds, right? I think we have a lot of almonds and we don't have enough not almonds.
Well, if it, it, it just depends on how important that almond is. Yes, this is true. All right, at this point, I'd like to open public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the Commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under consent calendar. Each speaker may address the Commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The Commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the Commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide sometimes general information. So to make a public comment at this time, you would look at your Zoom control panel and look for the hand icon. Click on that icon and that will alert staff that you would like to speak and you will be promptly connected. The alternative is that if you are listening in by phone, I believe it's star nine, is that right, Mr. Tapia? I got it right this time. If you hit star nine while listening, that will send also an indicator to staff that you would like to speak tonight. And again, this period of public comment is for things which are not on the agenda. On the agenda tonight, we have approval of minutes of the two meetings from April, a public hearing on a house in Claremont Way and a use permit for a childcare center on Willow Road. So, Mr. Tapia, is there any indication of someone wishing to speak?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and members of the public. At this time, I am not seeing any public comments, but as usual, we can give it a minute or two to see if any come through.
Now, you say a minute or two. If you translate that into Italian, everyone knows that's anywhere from a second or two to an hour or two. But we may not actually wait a full minute. Maybe another ten seconds or so, since in the world of electronics, you just have to key pound not star nine or click on that icon. All right, if we are still seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and move to our next section, which regards our consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, items are approved generally without discussion in one motion. In this case, the two items are the approval of minutes from the April twelve Planning Commission meeting and approval of minutes of the April twenty six Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Mr. Doran?
Totally. I was not present for the April twenty sixth meeting, so we keep the two minutes together. After accuse myself from voting on the consent calendar, I expect you have orders to approve without it, but I just wanted to point that out.
That's worth pointing out, and I think it's worth separating the two items, so I propose we do that. And I'll ask for a motion regarding the April twelve Planning Commission meeting minutes.
Chair Riggs?
Mr. Ducardi?
Yeah, I'd move approval as submitted. Could I also just, I was reflecting on, and I'm your previous comment about timing and speaking Italian, and I know it was well-intentioned, but I would just reflect that it also does potentially imply that somebody from a particular background has a particular point of view in the world that I'm sure was not intended, but I would just want to flag that it could have an unfortunate interpretation by people. Thanks for letting me say that.
I, I think it's great that you brought that up in our highly politically sensitive time. I actually rather hope that the Post picks up on that and then the day later discovers that I am fifty percent Italian. So thank you for raising that issue.
Thanks for letting me. I appreciate it.
I'm so glad. I think, do I have a second? Mr. Kale, thank you. And, oh, and the phrase is un attimo, which actually does have multiple translations. If you use it, then I have greatly missed that phrase. So we have a motion and second on the table to approve the April twelve Commission meeting minutes. All in favor? Oh, we don't do that. I will roll call the roll and Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
And Mr. Ducardi?
Yes.
And Mr. Doran?
Yes.
And Mr. Kale?
Yes.
And Ms. Kennedy? Yes, and Ms. Tate?
Yes.
Thank you, and my response is yay, so it passes seven zero. And so now let us vote on the April twenty six Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I have a motion or is there a need for discussion on any item there?
Move adoption.
Mr. Ducardi, thank you. Move and a second. Mr. Kale, thank you. All right, voting once again, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Ducardi?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
abstain.
Mr. Kale?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
abstain.
I'm sorry, abstain. Thank you. And Mr. Ms. Tate?
Yes.
And I'm a yay. And again, I would like to compliment the quality of the minutes that we don't seem to be finding anything to correct or ask questions on. Thank you to staff. That brings us to our public hearing section. And the first item up, item F1, is a use permit request. Applicant Daniel Ewald for four fourteen Claremont Way. This is a request for a use permit to demolish a single-family, single-story home with an attached garage and construct a new two-story residence with an attached garage on a substantial lot, on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot depth in the R1U res, single-family urban residential district. Mr. Tapia, I believe this is your project. Are there any late comments regarding this application?
Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. We have no updates to the staff report, but I am available for any questions the Commission may have.
Thank you very much. And would the applicant like to make any comment regarding the project before we discuss it, to introduce it?
I would just note, Commissioner, excuse me, Chair Rigs, that the applicant and the, excuse me, the applicant consisting of the architect and the homeowners are present to give a presentation. So they are available.
And my video is not on.
All right, we have planned up.
I'll go to start. My name is Scott Fruing. My wife, Charlotte Drew, is here with me. She and I are the two property owners. We are long-term Menlo Park residents. We've lived in the city for twenty-one years and at four one four Claremont Way for eighteen years. Our goal for this project is to build an accessible house. We have some family needs. We have two boys who have muscular dystrophy and use wheelchairs, and the goal of this project was to really make our house accessible for a family that needed greater access around our home. We've worked with Daniel Ewald, who's the architect, to do that, and I'll turn it over to him to present the project.
Thank you, and good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. I'm Daniel Ewald, the architect for the project, and I just wanted to quickly highlight just a few points about the project. I've got a little bit of a lag here on the, here we go. On the video, so this is the, the current house, and we just wanted to point out that it is currently, it is a substandard corner lot that is always faced east towards Claremont Way, but the frontage has been determined to be on the north side of, which is actually Claremont Place due to the non-conforming depth of the lot. Our proposal reorients the, the garage of the house to the north and then results in a completely conforming building that also has minimal effect on any heritage trees, which it's tricky to work around on this particular quarter lot. The proposal does not max out the height. It exceeds all minimum setback requirements on three sides, including the two that face the adjacent neighbors. And the south side, which is the most open, is set back twenty-six and a half feet, which is six and a half feet more than required. The, let's the massing is intended to step back from both Claremont Way and Claremont Place. The design is intent, or the design incorporates horizontal lines, low roofs, deep eaves, and natural materials to integrate with the landscape. And the eaves have prominent cedars, are prominent and have cedar soffits. And the elevator volume is intended as a solid kind of anchor to these horizontal elements going off in different directions. The sorry, just waiting for the views to catch up. The design is predominantly open to the south and to the east, which is actually in consideration of the neighbors as well as energy use and controlling sun exposure, which also led to minimal openings on the west side of the building. The large windows face to the south yard, which is adjacent to that neighbor's garage and is screened by large existing bay laurels and then other taller trees. And here is a view from an aerial view from above, which shows the house. It has the outline of the new house as well. And it shows the relationship of the property to its neighbors, to the screening trees, et cetera. And then also looking directly south from the second story, this is looking towards four twenty Claremont way. And again, you can see how tall the screening trees are, and there is a garage beyond. And then this is looking to the west, towards five Claremont Place. And just beyond those trees is a carport, the, the rest of the house orients to the south and to the west away from our building. So in summary, we believe that this project is sensitive to neighbors, to the trees, and it conforms or exceeds all planning code requirements. Thank you. We are interested in your comments and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ewald. Do we have any initial questions from our panel before we go to public comment? All right, seeing none, I will invite the public to make comment on this project. Again, we invite the public to indicate their interest in speaking by looking for the hand icon on the Zoom control panel. You click on that icon and tells you, tells us that you would like to speak alternatively, star nine on your phone if you happen to be attending the meeting by telephone. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you begin with your name and your either address or jurisdiction. In other words, either on, perhaps on Laurel Street, or if you're adjacent, then it would be Palo Alto adjacent neighborhood. So we'll give it un attimo before we see if there is any interest in speaking here. Mr. Tapia, do we have anything?
Chair Riggs, I can confirm there are no public comments at this time.
And thank you. Then let's move ahead. We'll close the public comment period. And we'll bring it back to our panel for discussion or any questions you may have of the applicant team. Ms. Kennedy?
I'm just going to cut to the chase that, you know, I really appreciate the, the attractiveness of this project, but mostly I'm compelled to make a motion to approve this project because I think it is incumbent on us to make sure that all of our community members can live in homes that fit their needs throughout their lifetimes. And the fact that you can do this in the house that you purchased eighteen years ago in the community that your family calls its own, it's wonderful. So I would make a motion to approve this project without any of the regular debate around architectural detail. That's all.
Ms. Kennedy, you just gave away the fact that they could propose anything in the future and get your vote. I, I can't say I disagree, but are there any other comments or opinions, Mr. Kale?
Thank you. I agree. It's a handsome project. I do have a couple of questions architecturally. Starting with the materials, if you could, if, if someone could just walk us through the materials, I see there's a, a stone tile, horizontal wood siding, a painted fascia, the cedar, and some aluminum. And then I'm worried, I'm not worried, I'm concerned, or I'm curious about the shaded sections in the elevation. I'm not sure what those are around the windows particularly.
The, there are aluminum or there are metal panels above the windows. I think you're looking at the header area?
Yes.
Yes, it's basically, most of the windows are corner windows. So the idea is to try and group them together on both elevations by having a corner panel and then above them to, to take, fill up the space that is between the soffit and the top of the window, just as a grouping mechanism.
Okay, and the wood siding, is that a, like a stained cedar or something like that?
Yes.
And what's the stone tile material?
The idea there is, it is more of, I would think more of, of a brick proportion or maybe a slightly elongated brick proportion, but that the material itself would be a stone rather than masonry.
Okay, I appreciate the three D renderings. I saw that in the, in the package that there was, the neighbor saw it. So glad we got to see it too. From the elevations, I was concerned it might be busy with the materials, but the three D helped a lot. I was wondering if the, if it made sense that the chimney would also be finished in the stone instead of the wood siding?
It is, when you're inside the house or when you're in the backyard, you look through the glass at, at the element that is the chimney. And we're lucky with modern fireplaces. There's a brand called Ortal that, that can do very minimalist fireplaces that can also not, they don't require the, the same degree of non-combustible materials that fireplaces have needed for a long time. And the and the, you know, the, the portion above the fireplace kind of floats above it. So the idea was that we would, that it would not appear to be floating stone, it would, or something that's heavy. So on the interior, it's actually a cabinetry, kind of a grayish, brown cabinetry, so that the idea is that that will go up and you would see it literally come up into the outside. So it was more about trying to match the exterior material to the interior than about being a traditional fireplace. We also felt that the elevator tower, while being a much larger version of that, it, it sort of serves that role and that anchoring role. And that it, it might look a little odd and be slightly redundant, but that was just our take on it.
Okay, I wonder, the, the standing seam metal roof is, you know, a great roof will last forever. I just wonder at that roof pitch, is it going to be very visible and, and I wonder about the cost of that versus just why you didn't do like a standard I TPO or other type of roof?
Sure, no, it's an excellent point. We are using the TPO on the upper roofs because they are not visible. The, the standing seam, you'll pretty much just see at the edge if you were walking by or in an adjacent house. But we do have this home office area that is, has windows on three sides. And the standing seam metal roof is, in a sense, most seen from that space. So it's more about the owners and the residents not having to look at a TPO roof and, and looking at something that's substantial and a nice material.
Okay, and our last question, I, I didn't see any mechanical, I'm assuming that's accounted for with the, the condensers outside and maybe a tankless water heater somewhere?
That's correct, and we do, we are continuing to have a crawl space underneath this house, so that provides the distribution for ducts and some of the other equipment.
Great, thank you for your answers. So I would agree, it's a very handsome house. I appreciate that the height has been kept down, so it's not too massive in an area where there's a lot of one-story houses. And I appreciate the efforts to save the tree by the driveway, so I will second the motion as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Kale. So we have a motion and a second on the table. Do we have any other comments before we call Mr. Ducardi?
Yeah, I just wanted to, for the record, state that my family and the Drew Free family know each other socially, but I don't think that will impact my judgment on this project. Thank you.
All right, very good. And so I will make one quick comment and then call for the vote, and that is just that I will speak strictly to the architecture as the neighbors see it. And this is a very compatible modern design. Staff has heard before that, at least for myself, I hold modern design to a somewhat higher standard than traditional, partly because it has to fit and with predominantly some kind of traditional environment. And this project certainly does that overall attractive in generally, most of the ways that, that we look to review a project. And I say that not as a minimum requirement for passage here, since frankly, we have approved distinctly lesser designs, but to express at least my gratitude from my position that a project is brought forward that I believe will clearly add to the neighborhood. And so now you have a hint what my vote will be, so we will have the, we have the motion and second on the table, and let's vote, starting with Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
And Mr. Ducardi?
Yes.
And Mr. Doran?
Yes.
And Mr. Kale?
Yes.
And Ms. Kennedy? Oh, we already know, but you can say. And Ms. Tate? I'm sorry, Ms. Tate?
Yes.
Thank you. And you have my vote, so we have approval, unanimous approval for this attractive project. And congratulations and may it go well to fruition.
Thank you all very much, Commissioners. We appreciate it. Have a good evening, all.
And you. Right, at this point, we bring up item F2. This is a use permit applicant Tom and Marinoff for one thirty-five Willow Road. I'm going to hand this over to our Vice Chair, Mr. Doran, to read the description, since I am involved in this project. And at this point, I will log off as a Commissioner, and I will be available if needed, which may not, which may not be as the architect of record of this project. Hi.
Chair Riggs? This item is a use permit for one thirty-five Willow Road. Request your use permit to change the use from existing commercial building from office to a childcare center in the C1A Administrative and Professional District. Childcare centers are considered special use in the C1A District and require a use permit approval. A maximum capacity, the childcare center would have forty A maximum capacity, the childcare center would have forty children aged one and a half to five years old, five staff members. The childcare center would operate between the hours of eight AM and six PM, Monday through Friday. I believe we have, uh, Mr. Turner on, uh, the staff report. Uh, Mr. Turner, do you have anything to add to the staff report or anything else to tell us this time?
Yes, good evening, Vice Chair Doran and Commissioners. Um, there are a couple updates to the staff report. Um, staff received two pieces of correspondence after the, uh, publication of the staff report. Um, one last week from Mr. Steve Fulmer, um, stating that although he has general concerns about traffic on Willow Road, um, he has no objections to this specific project. And then that was sent, um, last Friday, and then one this evening, um, from Ms. Lynn C. Shu, indicating she had some additional questions, um, and concerns about the, um, number of children, um, how we kind of limit the, um, the enrollment cap and, um, questions about, um, the, uh, the driveway entrance and traffic along Willow Road. Um, both of these pieces of correspondence have been attached to the agenda online. Um, and with that, I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Do we have any questions from the commission at this time? Seeing none, uh, do we have the applicant or the representatives, do they wish to make a presentation?
Yes, we're here. Hey, my name is, uh, Plamen, and this is my wife, Michelle, and we're the owners of Wonder School, uh, where we have a current location down the street in Menlo Park.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for, um, being here. I'm Michelle. And I'm the owner, director and founder of Wonder School Preschool. We're currently operating at twelve fifteen O'Brien, just down the street at Menlo Park. And we're hoping to relocate our preschool, um, to one three five Willow Road, and we're very hopeful because this has been a long dream in the making to have a facility to run our preschool, which we're very passionate about. We want to be a part of the community, and we want to be able to serve the families of the community. Many families who are currently attending our school that live in Menlo Park and have a big need for childcare in their, in their family life. So we're hoping that we can further serve that need and meet our community's needs and be a part of this growing and thriving community.
Thank you. Um, so we have our own, Mr. Riggs, I understand, is the architect of record. Uh, is he going to say anything, Mr. Riggs? Do you want to make a presentation this time or not?
I, I don't really have anything to add other than that, um, a- as longer-term members of this commission have seen, we, we go through quite a process to approve a childcare center adjacent to or in a residential neighborhood. Um, and we hope that we have met all of the steps, uh, that one can. And that, um, it is as evident to the commission as it is to us that the project is compatible with the neighborhood and will serve a, a need that is, well beyond, I think, what, uh, what is available in terms of services at the moment. I'm available for any questions that come up regarding the architectural elements, uh, not that there are very many.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Were the applicant or the architect this time in the commission? Okay, seeing none. Um, I think we need to open it up for public comment at this time, Mr. Tapia. Can you tell us if we have anyone who wants to make a public comment?
Yes, Vice Chair Doran, just as a reminder for those who are attending this meeting, if you do, go ahead and click on the hand feature on your control panel, that'll notify staff that you do have a comment. Also, if you are listening in via phone call, you go ahead and click star nine on your keypad, that'll also notify staff that you have a comment. And at this time, Vice Chair Doran, I am seeing two public commenters, and with your permission, I will go ahead and introduce them.
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll go ahead and introduce the first speaker. As it appeared, just as a reminder, if you can please state your first and last name, the political jurisdiction where you live, and just note that you do have three minutes to make your comment. So Heather Hopkins, you should have the ability to activate your microphone.
Hi, good evening, planning commissioners and staff. My name is Heather Hopkins. I'm with a nonprofit called Community Equity Collaborative, which is based here in Menlo Park. And our group advocates for early learning on the San Francisco Peninsula. I'm also a consultant with Build Up for San Mateo County's Children, which is an initiative to grow and improve the supply of early care and education facilities in our county. And I live in unincorporated Menlo Park. I emailed a letter earlier today in support of the proposal, and I just wanted to call in to reiterate three, three points. Um, the first is that we really need more childcare in Menlo Park. Um, we're currently experiencing a growing shortage of childcare. We're especially in need of spaces for children under the age of two years, uh, which the applicant serves. And, um, childcare, childcare programs are, operate at very low margins, so I hope you'll avoid lowering the proposed capacity. My second point is that it's exceedingly difficult to find appropriate space for childcare in San Mateo County, as I, and indicated in my letter. And finally, while traffic, parking and noise are almost always concerns when childcare centers are in the permitting process, there have been few actual issues and complaints in San Mateo County, according to Build Up, after centers open. And as, um, Commissioner Riggs indicated, uh, the same issues were raised by concerned neighbors for a child, childcare center on Bay Road some years ago, and that center has become a beloved part of the neighborhood. So I hope you will approve the permit, and thank you all for your service to Menlo Park.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tapia, we have another public comment?
Yes, Vice Chair Doran, I will go and introduce Michael Zhang. Just as a reminder, if you can please state your first and last name, political jurisdiction which you live in, or organizational affiliation. So at this time, Michael Zhang, you should have the ability to speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is Michael Zhang. I live in, um, at, uh, one four three Willow Road. And I'm the next neighbor to the potential childcare, childcare on one thirty-five. And there, uh, I, there are two concerns for me, actually. The first one is, uh, the business owner contacted us with those potential children to be in the facility. And at the beginning, I got an email to say, okay, we'll have thirty kids there. And then later, they called my wife, and my wife, I'll tell you that, what's the exact number of kids? They said, oh, we have twenty kids. And now, and later, when I talk with the planning department, they said they have forty kids on their application. Uh, after I did some research, now I, we have to pretty much like, we want to verify what's going on. And, and I, according to like a by there square footage of the building, if they apply for the permit with California, the licensing office, the minimum is roughly about thirty square feet per kid. And now, like, we are concerned of what's going on, like, what's the exact number you want to put it there? That's my first one. Another one is, even they, not though, they put some number there right now, what if they change it later? Because they have the potential there. That's the first one. And the second big concern is for the, for the, like, uh, the driveway in and out, because for the, as you can see from their drawings, the driveway is roughly like under like twenty feet. If you turn a car like ninety degree into the driveway, you need like roughly like ten feet of the, the, like, a radius. So basically, what I mean is, there only one car in or out. You cannot do both at the same time. But the thing is, that's property so close to the intersection of Willow and, and Middlefield. And so the bikes, they start to prepare, either go straight, turn left, turn right, and especially with the rush hour. And my concern, like, one thing is, like, when there will be traffic, even though the dimension, or they do the, the, like, a traffic, uh, plan, whatever, that's to be hard to control. And you, you can, you can see it, but you can, can, can you see like, uh, one parent came at eight o'clock, they supposed to come to forty-five, eight forty-five. You cannot let them drop off the kids, that's hard for a business point of view. And another thing is, from the, this design, there will be some, like, blocks at drive, at entrance especially. So is there any ways, like, anything we need to take concern about the safety of pedestrian and also the bikers on the road? Especially, like, we have kids to, like, uh, I may and, uh, Hughesboro, I mean, and I mean, Julio. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jane. Mr. Tapia, do we have any other public comments?
At this time, Vice Chair Doran, I'm not seeing any other comments.
Okay, I think we've had enough time with the two comments, or anyone to get in, their hand raised if they have a comment. So I will close public comment this time and bring it back to the dais, our virtual dais, and see if any of the commissioners would like to speak on the application. Mr. Kale, Commissioner Kale?
Thank you. Um, I have a question for the planning staff, if I can, through the chair. Um, I've visited today, and, um, I've just had a question about the driveway. See, in the staff report that a stop sign is recommended at the end of the driveway. But I was curious if any thought was given to, uh, a right turn only sign as well, because making a left turn across Willow is, is fairly dangerous, I think, and, um, you know, given it rush hour, it's probably impossible to be able to make that turn. So has anyone at the staff talked about a, a right-hand turn only thought?
The transportation division reviewed the plans and, and didn't make any mention of a, of a right turn only, um, sign. They only suggested the stop sign. However, looking at, um, the entrance to the driveway, there is a double yellow line, directly in the, in the median, so I don't believe they're actually allowed to make a right. Anybody would be allowed to make a left turn there anyway. If they were to cut across, um, the street and the lines, um, but that could certainly be a potential, um, condition of approval, if you wanted to add that.
Oh, I'll mention, I did make a left turn today, and I immediately thought it was a mistake after I did that, so I think, uh, unless you're familiar with the, with the driveway, that might be a good condition to add. Also, the, there's a hedge next door, so you almost have to pull out into the dry, to the sidewalk before you can see what's coming, um, westbound on Willow Road, so hopefully that can be addressed with, uh, with the neighbor to make that sidewalk area safer. Thank you.
Mr. Kale, do we have anyone else who would like to speak? Mr. DeCarty?
I started clarifying questions. Some of the correspondence we received, and I think the first comment was the childcare spaces are such a premium. So this would be for forty spaces, is that correct? And that's what the staff recommendation is, or is it, and I apologize for now getting confused, but I couldn't quickly find the reference in the materials. But the recommendation from staff is to approve at forty, is that correct, Mr. Turner?
The applicant's proposal is a maximum of forty, um, and staff reviewed it and recommended, um, approval of that cap. Um, that, that was not a, a staff recommended, um, number. It was the number the applicants proposed.
Okay. Um, and then on the, uh, sort of staggered, you know, pickup times, what, if I could just ask, I guess, the applicant, what, what traffic problem are you solving for there? Is that to assure that there's not a backup onto Willow Road with people turning in? Or is it being able to turn around in the back of your parking lot, or? And, and as you answer that, if you could also answer, can, in fact, only one car get up and down the length of the, of the parking area by the building? But my main curiosity is what, what's the problem being solved by the staggered drop-off?
Yes, so it's pretty much to alleviate both things, the traffic on Willow and also the parents being able, in the parking lot, being able to turn around. So we've been, uh, doing the staggered drop-off and pickup for about a year and a half, two years now at our current location, and it's, you know, worked pretty good. Most parents are respectful of other families, and they abide by the times that we give them, so it's been working perfectly.
And just to add on to that also, it would help with the flow so that they're able to turn around in the back parking lot. And two cars are able to come up and down at the same time.
Okay. Thank you. And so from your experience, it's not a hardship on parents. I'm recalling my life, uh, at that era, and being able to assure that I got somewhere within a ten-minute window was often difficult. But your experience is that, that has not been a hardship for your, um, attendees of your facility?
No, because, um, our staff teachers are good about coming in and helping the kids come in from the car as their parents want them, and also, so it helps with a lot of things.
Great, thank you. That's what I, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Anyone else like to speak or ask a question? Mr. Barnes?
Hi, good evening, thank you. Um, what a great reuse of this building. I live just across Willow on a parallel street on McKendry Drive, and goodness knows how many times I've driven by this particular site. As a matter of fact, I walk my dog in the, the parking lot there, so I'll have to stop that soon, I suspect. And to have an existing building converted in a low-impact way, and you just got, you know, a lot of surface space. Sort of reuse it, reuse the existing structure, pop in a needed childcare, um, I think it's a great reuse of the building. You know, the, the turn radius in there frankly is tight. You know, I, I think you're gonna need to have some really good, um, attentive parents and/or staff, making sure that folks are coming in and coming out, in a way that they can turn, park, pick up and leave. That is something I think you're gonna pay attention to, uh, as far as the physical plant and the, um, the use of the building, the location. Uh, I think all of that, uh, bodes well for this, you know, for this project in this, in this area. So I'm supportive of the project, and we seem to be winding down, so I will, uh, make a motion to, uh, approve the project per the staff report, and of course, look for, you know, any other colleagues who haven't commented on this project and/or a second. Thank you.
Mr. Kale?
Uh, I'd also add that this is a much-needed use, uh, for this building and for the city, so I appreciate the application. Um, I wanted to ask the maker of the motion if you would consider a right turn only sign, either in addition to the stop sign, or maybe in lieu of the stop sign.
So I, I like the idea. I'm a little, so work with me on this, if you would, Commissioner Kale. I, I want, I want there to be best practices from the transportation engineers in the city to weigh in on it as well. So I, I'm slightly reticent to be prescriptive of it, because there may be mitigating factors as to why this or why that. So, uh, would you be comfortable as, uh, as a condition of approval, it goes back for final review from the transportation engineers for a final assessment, and then we, 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 we go with what the after-review, the final assessment of the transportation engineer. If that's okay with you, then certainly, I appreciate that, friend amendment.
Yes, that would be perfectly fine.
Thank you.
Okay, I think the motion's clear enough. Um, Commissioner Kennedy, did you want to speak? Okay, I think the motion's clear enough. Mr. Kennedy, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, you know, just to sort of add sort of to the collegiality of this this planning commission meeting tonight. You know, I think if our meetings went like this, where there were, you know, I think both of these projects are excellent examples of the way in which we can support you know, good building, keep people staying in the community, adaptive reuse of spaces without completely tearing things down and building new and making things, like bringing in some super fancy high-end, you know, niche preschool, right, where, you know, there's a seven hundred and fifty dollar a month buy-in, right? Like, that's not this, right? So I feel like this is the kind of thing that makes you feel good about being a planning commissioner. And I do think that, you know, it feels really good to have both of these projects stacked together as they are. So, you know, let's get it, let's get to the voting, because, you know, I'm certainly aboard this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Did anyone else wish to speak before we vote on the motion? Seeing none, I'll put it to a vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarty? Yes, and echoing my fellow commissioner's sentiments, what a great use of the community. Richard Cale?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Well, I'm happy to vote in favor of this one as well. I think it's a great reuse of existing buildings, so very happy to vote in favor. And with Commissioner Riggs recused, that makes it the vote six oh in favor of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it greatly.
So I think we're gonna have Chair Riggs rejoining and retaking the chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Doran. That concludes our hearing, public hearing section, and brings us to informational items. I believe we have a future planning commission schedule and possible other information. Ms. Sendemire?
Yes, good evening again. So for the next meeting, we have 211 O Court, which is a project of the O'Callinan Water Track. And then we also have the capital improvement plan and the planning commissions reviewing that for general plan consistency. And that concludes the updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
We have any questions or anything commissioners would like to bring up at this end of meeting time? All right, seeing none, I'm glad to see there's still a glimmer of light in the sky, and we close this meeting at seven fifty-eight PM. Good night, all.
Might be a world record.
Thank you, Chair Riggs. Thank you, staff.